Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a good day to talk about this. It's this, it's a phone that is big. I'm so sorry. You can smell it in those clothes you made. But, um.
Interesting.
Yep.
I like it. Enjoy it.
Yeah. You have no body.
Self.
Would like to.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Yeah, because we are, we are getting to say.
We're ready.
We're waiting for the child.
Want to turn around?
And we need to walk them.
And we want to smack it back.
And then it's an outdoor. Did you say, well, the sound of yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City District Heights work session. It is Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And it is seven oh one P M. And I call this meeting to order. First item is the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion for the work session meeting agenda Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty four?
Commissioner Gomez moves to approve the work session agenda for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner James, let's have the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here is. Next is information items. Um, we have the legislative update from L A. Arrest Consulting.
Mr. Perez, you want on?
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the. I've been here with you. I have Jonathan Brown with me, one of our consultants with L A. Arrest Consulting, who will be your kid to hear more from after our speak. But I just want to say, um, so thank you for, uh, understanding the last time you couldn't be on, um, I'll say former colleague and former profession. Then move on. And I lost a friend and, uh, couldn't be on that night. So thank you for giving me a little bit of space that evening. But I'm glad to be back with you. And you know, we started the legislative session this year and I would jump right into and if you have a robust agenda, it's good to be like you get to your business, uh, for the residents of the city. And we're proud to be a part of this, I always tell you. But we restarted the legislative session and Jonathan's gonna go through a few bills that we've been tracking. Uh, we try to keep, uh, you know, a robust, uh, tracking system. But we, we like to stay holding in on the things that matter to you the most and those are things that you will, uh, go through as you know, we're, you know, talking to your, uh, state officials about, you know, funding requests. Uh, that's something that we'll hold in line tomorrow. Be, you know, Valentine's Day, happy early Valentine's Day to all, uh, by the way, and Black History Month as well. But we're, we're gonna be on, uh, so we're gonna be, you know, senators when they come out of session supposedly it's gathered as well, the Senate delegation of Bridge, Georgia, this will be. And so we'll be in front of, uh, in there listening to the bills they are meeting last week and meeting. So that's a part of things that we're tracking. So I also want to thank, um, your staff, your city manager, uh, David Striebe for getting us the information for us to legislation that you were interested in, necessary letters that we need to submit on, uh, on things that you have, uh, bills of interest. So thank you for, uh, uh, you know, following our request and moving rapidly to get that stuff over with, uh, David and your staff. So thank you for that, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. But then I'll turn it over to Jonathan because I want you to get used to this guy, this guy, uh, you know, you met him before, but now I want you to hear about some of the work that, you know, he's been doing as part of his team. So Jonathan, I'm gonna pass it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, great.
Thank you, Tony, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. Um, and as Tony said, I'm gonna have a couple of pre-buttages. Um, we're gonna have a moment here on some bills that were posted on the media and picking out the development and realize all answers I'll kind of go over to them and then if any questions, let me know. But I think two bills in particular that we're tracking, one were, um, positive nature and one is more so to keep an eye on. Um, W Holmes had a bill that is probably working its way, uh, through the channel. It did go through, it did go in January eighteen. And the pressure was coming, um, delegation. But it's a bill that allows, uh, stronger, which is allowing stronger zoning controls for municipalities be able to create kind of tailored decisions, uh, for their communities and areas. So it's definitely very positive, um, in terms of allowing this specific development or change to municipalities. So we'll continue to watch that. Um, there's also a bill by the company, Alston, which from Bridge, Georgia County delegation to make this way that the house had been cleaned up some. There still is some, um, potential, um, development limiting language in there such as saying that they should use the zone as an airport, a shopping airport. Um, and placing restrictions on, on multi-family use development and things of that nature. So keep an eye on that and see how that matures and develops as it continues to go on. Um, another great bill, um, Bill that Jazz Lewis is he economic innovation agency, creation of residential, creation of it. Economic Innovation Agency would be free thing, one of economic development. Um, two, creation of a picture capital one. Um, and then three, aiming at tech startups. So the, the, this economic innovation agency is returning to bringing new tech-driven, um, business into the county. That's kind of the sole mission of them. So we'll watch that as well to see what potential with the picture capital one looks like. Um, there's no specific physical bill attached to it, just on the beer and just suggestions. Um, there's also Senator Watson's bill, Mr. Garland, she heard about that. Um, but anticipating that activity or not, it's just simple to be aware. That's a, that's a bill that the man games rouse taking the ball out pretty closely in the Senate chambers in terms of, uh, they decide to kind of see if that's going to work and what's gonna happen. But it was something that we'd be aware of as well. Um, there's another, um, bill out there in terms of, I don't get Martinez, has to do with the enforcement of local laws. Right now, in terms of enforcement of local laws, the max you can do is a thousand dollars. So if you're only six months in jail, someone just officially does not follow local laws and things of that nature. Um, this enables somebody, this enables you as a municipality to have stronger records to go up by thousands in terms of somebody, um, officially having regulations and rules and things of that nature. So, um, that bill is out there in terms of helping, you know, for sure where you miss about the rules to hold you. And then, well, um, and also another bill out there about land use affordability. Um, and it's not, it's still unrelated to the title, but it isn't. It really has two kind of key components to it that could affect the municipalities. One is it, it rules out, you cannot prohibit manufactured homes in this bill. So it pretty much alcohol is the fact that you may, any, anybody anywhere could, uh, say manufactured homes are not allowed. So that's one piece of it. The second piece of it, it pretty much says that an area that is owned for single family is also being done for manufactured homes. So if you have a community that's owned, same family, it's also free, any measure home there, it can be still ours. Um, another key component of the bill is that it mandates in certain areas, you know, stations, state-owned buildings, things of that nature, mandates district requirements that even gives you, um, specifics, specifically calls out how many measures it's in. So, um, so that's a big bill there as well. But, um, different aspects to it that will continue to, uh, and then last but not least, I think this is probably been an issue about county everywhere, that's competitive organized reason. Um, and one of the things I'll say about this bill, looking at it, is that it's not so much, uh, its aim is not so much at retail debt as it is looking at this retail debt. So it lists things such as the dollar about being fifteen hundred dollars. Um, and looking at, you know, a string of incidents and things of that nature. So it's really going after the kind of professionals, if you will, that are really hitting up all our areas. It does have a lot of legislation, excuse me, a lot of, um, good elements to it that allows for presumptuous or work more in actively and, and things of that nature. But, um, but definitely is kind of aimed at looking at, um, organizing retail debt and some of the large debt. Um, but that bill is out there as well. That's it for me, um, in terms of some high-level bills that, that would be of interest. And, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tony bringing.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That covers, uh, quite a bit, you know, some things we, you know, we could have touched on that are going on, but there are some things just sitting around that's in the committee that really needs a lot of work, uh, in some of that delegation. And so, uh, we're, we're tracking, you know, keeping informed as we, you know, send our monthly reports in, written reports in, which we'll do, uh, so we'll keep them informed as the way they are. Like, if we got into some of those other things that are going on that you're sitting there discussing, I think we would, uh, be on here all night. So we're trying to take your entire agenda with what's going on and we'll continue to track as you all, uh, ask us to do. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. For, for your reporting out, uh, Tony, could you make sure that we hear the actual bill?
Sure, John. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can definitely do that. Um, when we, um, and it'll be on our written report as well. So Jonathan, we can correct that in the, in the future, just to make sure, you know, bill number sponsor, all that, all of that's on our written report, but we'll make sure we do that as well. Yes, ma'am.
I, everything I, everything I've covered tonight, and I did give this name very well spin on all of us, but I wouldn't want to give that to you, uh, to Davis. I mean, I completely, I definitely, it has a little number attached to it, so.
Yeah, we have that copy as soon as when you're reporting out for the residents.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you can, yeah, so your residents can track the, uh, bill number when they want to go to their website and things like that. So you know what we don't say, yes, we can, we can definitely do that.
Well, thank you. Since though we did not have any questions, uh, thank you for the before and we look forward to be, uh, more engaged with these bills as they go, you know, to, uh, to wish. Okay?
Absolutely. Well, and just FYI, just want to equal for now, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention because it's not out there yet. Last year, uh, there was a, we haven't seen it yet, but we are paying attention to potential maybe an obvious, uh, some of the bill at the county council, uh, that could have a negative impact on what we're doing. It was out there last year and it was sold, but it could have a negative impact on development. But we're looking for, we haven't seen it yet. It was sponsored by Councilmember De Dogan, uh, and I know it has some support by some others, but it was able to be held down and we're gonna. Watching your logo back as well. You know, it's, it's a.
Okay. Well, thank you for that report and, um, we look forward to hearing from you again next month.
Okay, thank you. Take care. Have a nice evening and good month. Thank you, Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So information items, number two, so we need to update, we're watching the words directly.
Okay, Madam Mayor, on the mayor's commission, are we all good for you?
Okay.
So I finally completed the memo. Um, in detail, if I knew, it'll go over on the Thursday column, how we be called on the vote, how we just pretty snow treating. How we're also, how we're also addressing our special assistance with the vulnerability to, I want to make special attention to that because I need your wonderful assistance to make sure that we get that information in. I did post a website too as well, and also the public works email would be great. I would like to get a listing of people with special needs, special assistance in advance if possible, so that in case of a snowstorm, you know, we can have a little team for them to either check to see if they need any additional assistance. But I know that those are some things that came up prior, um, during this past, so I want to make sure that capture all of that information. I did have a, uh, writing list, but I would like to have it, um, to every residential we answer this, but this pretty much just addresses all of those different things. Would you like me to go over each one in detail? I can pretty give, you know, give you like a complete amount of, of, like preseason preparation, the emergency routes, communication coordination, not just between us and staff, um, and also residents along with the awareness campaign, residential street clearing, sidewalk and pedestrian maintenance, equipment deployment and staffing, post-evaluations, event evaluations, because we do assessments afterwards to make sure to see if there's any damage, uh, emergency, emergency response protocol, special assistance for vulnerable fire relation, like I mentioned before. It's pretty much just expanding the information for loans to clear. Um, they do have a public works, um, I would say like a weather emergency, whether we did anything with the flooding, wherever the model on these are resources and we're expanding the resources and information to make sure that we stay up to date and we keep the residents updated as well. Uh, I would urge anyone to make sure that they go to district, get that forward, to make sure that they sign up for all of the, including whatever reports they, they look at. Web browser, the web browser, it would be yellow, I mean, red, not yellow, what I pointed to it, it's yellow in my, in my actual. Um, which will also be available.
Questions? Any questions?
There's any? So I guess when we get back, when we get, um, the TV back online, whatever you're part of, the convention as well.
Yeah, so that everything will be more cohesive and immediately posted. As soon as we get the updates, they, they will be posted.
And hopefully they're eligible sign that's sitting in front of the church that we've been waiting for a couple of years.
I hope so, too. I would like that. I'll look into that, too, as far as the, I'm sure with, that is something I need to adjust to. I'll make sure I have that question before you. At least a stat someday. May not be a solution, but it will definitely be an update.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one question. Um, can you, uh, repeat again? So if, if folks have, um, neighbors who need assistance, how can they get in contact with, uh, BPW?
The goal would be to either contact me directly on the phone and, um, that number, I can't remember what it's on, but just dial for a shoot option BPW or contact public works or sign up on the website. The goal would be to get that information now as much as possible, um, in a live condition now, but if they need to contact me in an urgent manner, uh, just give us a, what I would like to do is have that already in the plans. That way it's just the, more of like a rotating door, we immediately go check on who's resident and make sure that they, if they need anything, we'll have that as best prior to an actual social, that was the goal.
And so residents can call the office, they call public work, they get sent an email to the public works email address. And you mentioned the website. Is there a sign of link on the website?
There is a sign of link on the website. They do, uh, the plan won't be, uh, if you look, you'll see that, put posted related and subscribe. If you subscribe, it'll send you updates and everything, including not just weather, but even another thing.
Or content. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions?
Oh, and I would like also say the VA for Kane, yay! So now it's, it's, it actually came in the day that it's so. It's a VA service, that would be the after machine is pretty much how it's like that. We pre-treat sort of like that, it was liquid, ice versus salt, it's more sustainable too. It's more like, you know, we open the, and it keeps the roads clear a lot longer and so.
Any other questions for the issue?
You know, thank you.
Nice to see you, Red is playing.
I know, I'm gonna try to do that more often with your plans and protocol. They know where they can go. Oh, and also my number two, we also like that as well, Susan, for that. All right, thank you.
Public participation.
We have two minutes.
Okay. The first is Ms. Perry, for me?
Oh, okay. Up here? Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Commission. Okay, mystery. We kind of, uh, mad men to what I wanted to ask, and that was information. What's happening is, for instance, like, Ms. Washington gave a really good record, but some of that I couldn't hear.
Oh, okay.
And when you watch this on the top, what do you do to me? You really can't, you really can't hear it very well. So, and then I might put, what you say that about helping any citizen, you know, the thought of the females and we don't get out there and shovel like we used to, and it'd be our last show if we do. But, uh, that being said, couldn't find a way that we can make sure that I get information because we're really, what I do. But, um, Commissioner mentioned last, uh, we, about, uh, the, is it possible we can have a meeting, we something to get everybody just together and then like citizens say, hey, what about this, what about one? And, uh, he said, no, when Mitch talks, that's a good chance. I'm sorry. Ooh, sorry about that. Since the job, when he first came out, that's what he came for. He came to hear what it is that his constituents want and would love us to do that. And even talk about like, you know, organization, because some people may not want any, they may just want to be just where we are. And if they do, they may want to know, well, why are we doing this, what's the reasons? And the VA doesn't come in, yeah, to be able to participate so that they'll feel they are involved and input to whatever the city is doing.
So we are going to have, but I thought it would be better if we waited till after the session's over. And that way we can have all of our representatives and various questions, people about our English and other programs that we're doing, projects, meetings. We, we want to have everything out in front. And then David had an update on the communication part because we hear on the problems that people cannot hear, all this important information that we're giving at all times. So he's going to give a quick update, how we're going to solve that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to inform you, finally, that we do have our upgrade for the commission chambers scheduled. That includes all of the audio and video equipment and broadcast and webcast equipment that, um, serves to send our meetings and other information out into the community that is scheduled to begin February twentieth, so this coming Tuesday. We expect it to be wrapped up in about two days and have an overflow day for, uh, kind of incidentals and training. And so you can expect to see improvements following shortly thereafter.
But I would just simply say, sometimes people want to, if people can be in before committing decisions, and they can have buy-in in the beginning, then when you come back and you say, okay, we want to annex A, B, C, and D, but the people that live in the city want to talk, just say, well, did you think about the book over here? Or maybe B could be better than D? And then they have, uh, buy-in because they were allowed to discuss, or their opinion mattered prior to making decisions and then bringing it back to them. So like what Commissioner Tillman was saying in the last week, I personally, personally would like to see some more involvement. And then the other question here was, like, for instance, I was on the recognition board for, for the, um, new senior bill. I have heard absolutely nothing, especially from an advisory, um, position. You know, we have to, we have anything, we don't know the story. So I would like to see if they're more comfortable, maybe we want to evolve the citizens a little bit more. And then let us, we get a little feedback, do what you do with it, have a little feedback that you all, but at least I think we feel, well, for me, would feel that I had some input into what you were doing and, uh, decisions you were thinking that, but I thought was valuable as well. So that's just me, this is good as me.
Yeah, thank you. So the next public participation form is Lou Williams. Do you want to? There are questions? No more lying, is that right?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
So I have to read this, does the city employ a treasurer? If so, why is the city manager this thing? Budget items. That was the last word. Budget items.
I'm done with this question, isn't it?
So, yeah, we do have a treasurer and we work closely with our treasurer and our city manager works closely with our treasurer. And also the city managers work with the department gates, where we go through each budget item. We're all involved in what the budget looks like. And we know that we pride ourselves in starting early because we never start early. And so you have to have some connection with the city managing department because they report to the city manager. And also in order to make sure that all budget items are involved, discussed, talked about, rejected, you have to have one person that kind of talks about the narrative of where we're going and why we have. and why we have a budget. In the past, we've had a treasurer that controlled everything. Even the department heads didn't really have to say so in what they wanted and how things, that things targeted it. So we're probably a different approach. So hopefully everyone will like it. I think now that we can follow every penny, which is a good thing because that means we can budget or we can report that. But we do have to make sure that we have central location on how we're gonna budget and get that idea of, are we going to have to increase in certain areas? So it is a discussion. But, um, no, we do have a treasure. And treasury is always there. All right. So we only have two. So we have actual items. And the first is the Soul Source Fireworks Award. And I know I didn't have those two on the agenda, but I still would like to get some explanation.
We understand the annual, the return of the annual fireworks display is an important matter for the city. It's a time when the community can come together and celebrate. So we did anticipate this. We do have mystery solutions from recreation to give you a brief update on the fireworks display.
Could you start off with the history of when was the last?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody today. This is the president. The last time we had a fireworks here in the city of Detroit was before COVID. So like 2018, 2019. So it's been over four or five years. Um, so the recognition forum, we are excited to say that we do. We have solidified a vendor for the fireworks. Um, we went with a company called Digital Lighting. Company had one slot there. And so it was very important for us to lock in that date for July 4th with a rain date on July 5th. That no digital cars. Um, I'm meeting with the young lady representative, her name is Alicia. She will be here tomorrow to do the measurements and walk where you feel. Um, and so, uh, I had before the digital lighting, we had, um, five other vendors. Um, but if we went with the best one, everyone had the last slot. Because before, prior to COVID, um, it was an extremely, extremely turn of time very quick. Very, very quick. So they got booked up really fast. So in order for us to lock in and get our display back in the city of Detroit, we made sure we made it happen.
So we also found out that a lot of the companies put out this. The pool was smaller now to choose from. But I'm so happy that we were able to get this contract so we can have a nice.
Yes, and just so the residents will know, it's a 25-minute show. Um, usually we do about 15, 20, but we extended it this year. So we're gonna be a 25-minute show.
What do you have any more to add?
So I would like to say, brain job. So Ms. Williams, she did it. As you guys know, we got guys out. So she did the research, then she made the progress. She did all of that stuff. So I'm very proud of you and I hope that she's a part of the team.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Williams. Some detail will come out as we go on fire. Don't be, all of the information on all of our social media. And like, kudos to the entire recreation team.
Thank you.
Um, I can't tell you every year. I know everybody's seated here. Every year that it's getting closer to 35. Folks would be getting calls about whether or not we have fireworks in the morning. I'm very excited to hear the great, the recreation department favor over me and you. I think it's important for all of us as a community to be coming together and enjoy the celebration of the form. Um, but also if we can hear that family members outside of our borders would also come here. Folks would be very disappointed. Uh, another thing that I think the residents, the community of our needs to understand was that we had to make sure that the numbers were right. This celebration. We could have done something last year with the numbers because it was such a shortage of vendors. Also played into the fact that we were not able to do this. I mean, I think in most, in a lot of cases, they were asking three times what had been paid and you need to hear. So again, thank you to the entire recreation team. Everyone that had worked with this to make sure that this was brought back to us.
Whoops, sir. Thank you.
It was the search plus. Yes. Search plus the two departments of the works be a difference.
Even again. Oh, so we are getting the 2006 and the 2011 25. No, Chevrolet, I'm sorry, Chevrolet 25. We plan, they have reached their terms of the vote. One is the 2006, one is the 2011. The cost of maintenance and upkeep over here has to the past. And it's time for us to just do what we're doing. So right now, we wanted to make sure that we keep our fleet up to date so that we can keep making sure that we ensure our residents are staying service. So, yep, that's the reason.
So, um, so what are you having now?
We're going to, the plan is to trade them in, um, to retrieve two other vehicles. However, we, we're looking at two other vehicles now. But we wanted to make sure that we got this third place first. Um, to see what the trade is, how we could possibly be to also that thing for the number two people.
Will be the same, while?
It will be the same, not the same make. Hope it's a five. But it's not the same make, but the same size. Yes. Actually, one would be a 1500, the other would be a 2500. I feel like the 1500 would be for the shelter. Or if we can deal to those smaller streets, the 2500. We have a couple of those in the fleet right now. And eventually when we plan on making sure that we got there, I can tell you. So this is our fourth, in our second, our second set of two vehicles each that we surplus this one.
Questions for the commission?
Thank you.
Isn't there a motion?
Yeah, all right, all right.
Thank you. You guys will the show this thing.
I would, some of them will approve the same thing for February 13th. We want.
What's your bill is the hint?
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, she carries. Okay. Your next budget guidance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I will be brief with my introductory comments here. The goal of this item has been reported to you previously. I will let you know that assessments are beginning to come in. So we're receiving updated assessment information from the state. Due to my knowledge, we have not fully received our, um, annual report from State Department of Assessments and Taxation with respect to the total value of a real property portfolio. But we are right in the time of February when it's supposed to officially be delivered to the city. That will strongly influence our budget deliberations going forward. But based off of what we're seeing in the assessments right now, the estimates that staff provided back in January are holding true. If not, ended up being a little uncertain. So during the last discussion, the commission requested an amendments to the average homeowner's tax bill with respect to each of the different budgets. So for a reminder, an individual tax bill, not including any kind of deductions, exemption, so on and so forth, is the assessed value of the home divided by 100 times the annual salary. So in district heights, you could have $300,000 assessed home. Current rate of 0.687 equals your tax bill. There are two variables that are important to that equation. The assessed value, that is not under the state fair and non-domicile city's control, and the rate, which is a. I would direct your attention to table one. What we ended up doing was collecting six actual properties at random um, across the city and provide basic information, publicly available information for, um, the property to include construction here to give you an idea of what phase of the city it was built in. The current assessed value as of July 1, 2023. The assessed value that it's going to, um, over the three-year phase in period, as well as the first phase in figure. It also shows an approximate increase in valuation as well as a percentage increase. That percentage changes anywhere between appreciation and assessed value of just over 3% to northwards of 10%. So that's good in the sense that it confirms that property values within the city district heights are appreciating. It does add some consideration for the commission with respect to increase assessed value on the home as a base. Table number two shows what that change in, um, resident cost would be based solely on the change in assessment. So if you look at the last two columns in table two, due to the change or the increase in assessed value at the current rate of 0.687, there's anywhere from a, uh, $65, $66 increase annually up to, it looks like the highest figure that we looked at was a. Bills are paid twice in a year. And so the per-vill estimate based solely on increased valuation is showing in the last column. Table number three shows you the estimated annual change in tax in the half penny scenarios. It shows you the delta to the current rate at the 2024 assessed value. That ranges, you know, from about $11 to about $50 on either side of the current, of the, um, increase on the current rate. Table four breaks it up based solely on 23 valuation or compares it to 23 valuation. And table five shows the incremental rate between at current assessment from the half a penny down, current rate up, and half a penny up scenarios. So just to recap, the primary driver in the bill for this particular cycle is an increase in assessed value. What the commission can do is manipulate the tax rate to, um, to, to, uh, influence the revenue scenarios. But the assessed value is something that we don't have control. So as you look at table five, it looks like on average, in the half a penny down scenario, so 0.682, there is per-vill increase of approximately 25 to $92. Incrementally, as you go up to the current rate, 0.687, and then half a penny up in there to 0.692, it increases by factors of less than two. It's important to note that, um, this is preliminary guidance. Like, we are, as the mayor, Barry, as you pointed out earlier, we are starting early in the year. The purpose of starting early in the year is to give the commission as much flexibility and deliberation time as possible as you consider your budget needs for the upcoming this year. We are essentially just looking for, um, direction on how to prepare the proposed budget, which then officially gets off the commission's budget deliberations for the upcoming. And so both the assessed values that we're receiving from the state as well as the preliminary guidance rate values that you're considering inform how staff assimilates the budget. Of course, that is later influenced through the budget process, we can commission work sessions, hearings, deliberations, and budgeting, ultimately culminating in your adopted budget and your adopted budget. Any questions?
Any questions for the commission?
Thank you, David, for this presentation. I think it's very, um, it's easier to look at some examples, even though they're examples, they're numbers upon a birth. So it's easier to sort of conceptualize this. And we're not just talking as sort of like tax rates, which seem very abstract. Um, so thank you for that. And it's also very useful to sort of look at our collectively assessed home values. We are seeing some pretty significant increases over the next three years. That's something that's really important for us to keep around as we set a tax rate going forward. So my question for you is, if I understand, you know, sort of all of these tables, um, tables we're going to have, a matter of if we keep the tax rate at it is now, the average resident based on these, you know, six properties that we have listed here would still be paying an increased amount of somewhere between $65 and $175, basically.
Correct. We can average that out across housing types. Obviously, I tried to pull in a variety of sizes, ages. But that, that is an exaggeration.
Okay, so just on average, even if we leave things as it is, the bill just based on our assessed value of our homes would go up between $60 and $175 there.
Correct.
So there's, there's that. The other piece of that is if we go up a half a penny on the tax rate, it's averaging again to be around anywhere between $6 and $17?
Correct.
On the half a penny?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that seems to, that seems to me to be a very small difference when you're talking about Harrod's or Iswood, which is what we would be seeing on the tax bill. I also did have a conversation with a former councilman, Charlie, and I did bring up the discussion that we were having. Um, uh, when she was on council not too long ago, they were having a discussion of raising it, I think she said, five, um, 0.5 cents. Right? So we're talking about a half, a half penny up. And similar municipalities around us, their conversations are weighing larger variations of increases that they've been discussing. So it's really good to see that half a penny up is really, you know, nothing more than a $20 increase. nothing more than a $20 increase to what we're going to be seeing with our bills.
Commissioner Gomez, any other questions for the commission?
I'll just make a short comment. I really do appreciate you taking and showing us, you know, the details. I think this was really important to me. I think all of us care about the welfare of this community, about the growth of this community. And, you know, when you talk about things like taxes that really impact all of us, we're sitting on here, we're all residents, so we're all impacted by, by the tax, by the taxes. And so I really, I agree with Commissioner Gomez. It is a small number, under $20. And I look forward to us voting as a commission office this morning. It definitely wants to impact this whole.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Do you have any other questions or comments? So are we ready to move on to assess value number? Penny up? Can we come? Oh, half penny. Although it's not one in trouble, or penny, half a penny up, I apologize. Or do we want to move this to the next work session to be further adjusted? And because we have to start working. Makes me love working. Okay. So... So when we advertise a property tax rate between...
For the benefit of the residents, following, would you like to explain the motions? Because I'm asking you for two discrete motions.
Right.
Didn't catch it. So the motions that are provided, I mean, do two things. The first motion provides direction to staff on what scenario to set, or what assumptions to make with respect to tax rate relative to assessed value in the proposed budget. So it serves as the starting point for the commission's deliberations. So for example, yeah. Last year budget, as an example, the commission provided direction to set the budget at the constant yield rate, which is the default rate that was, well, at the time. What the budget was built on, and set of revenue assumptions that were used to make funding recommendations to the commission. The second part of the motion is basically a question of how much flexibility that the engine wants in the deliberation process. We have to advertise, if we move around from the current rate of 0.687. And advertising range gives the commission some room to deliberate investments in services or increases from which to create funding.
For the residents, that there have been a number of residents that have been concerned about the taxes. And what I would like to convey to the community is that it is a difficult decision for all of us in the city to... All of the decisions that we make are difficult because they do impact all of us. We do not take them lightly. We do not do it in a vacuum. We consider all of us in making these decisions. I think that, I love my community. I know all of us love this community. And I think that it is important for our community to continue to grow, to prosper, for others to look at our community and see how special we all see it as. And so I just want you to know, for me, for my colleagues, we do this because we care. We, we make these decisions that are going to benefit all of us because we care deeply about each one of you. And so sometimes when we make decisions that you may not particularly see in the moment of something that are going to benefit all of us, we are all entitled to express those concerns. You may not see it in the moment. When I came here, and many, many of the residents that have been here for a number of decades, seen the evolution of this city, and how we have grown, and how we have, have just prospered. And we want to continue to do that. And so in doing that, sometimes we want to have to make decisions. That's what you put us in office for, was to make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of this city. And so, we bless you. And so I'm gonna close this up. And so we, we just want you all to know that the decision is not one made easily, not one without thought, but one that we believe is going to be one that makes this District Heights the best District Heights. And I apologize if you felt, and I'm so much time.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on the commission?
Yes.
I could have a question to David's point on the advertised tax rate. So I don't know if we agree to what that advertised tax rate looks to be. So maybe we need to discuss that. It needs to be in between...
It could, it could be, if I may, it could be any rate that you said. It's a question of how much flexibility you want during the deliberation process. The advertised rate has to match the rate set in the works. And so advertising a range gives you space to deliberate and still comply with the advertising requirements for the budget ordinance. So if you advertise a range around the current rate, it lets you adopt the budget ordinance anywhere in there.
Okay, so, excuse me. So it still gives us flexibility because we still have not actually voted on the tax rate and our 25 budget. Right. We are just engaging in early planning for the budget, where we do need to assess some parameters, though we can't... I mean, we have, what, a $5 million annual budget minimally? So we do, we do need to start these conversations early, and that's what we're doing at this time.
Right.
It's simple.
So nothing says dominant at this point.
Correct.
You need something to work off of.
Correct.
So what would we put raise on the tax rate?
Yes, it's a good one. Maybe a half penny down from the current and then half a penny up from the current, since that seems to be our range of discussion?
Advertising range with this reason.
Okay, the current rate and the higher penny.
The current rate and higher.
Okay, the half penny up and the current rate.
Yes.
So David, would we, would we do both of the motions then?
Correct, because I need to know. The first part of the motion tells me what you're starting from is. And basically, we're building the budget with this. We can start it anywhere in that range, but I do need to start it somewhere. The city is heavily reliant on operating tax revenue for most of its operating hours. And so the starting point is, or having as much knowledge as we can on the starting point better influence the commission's deliberations.
Is the current rate, the 0.687?
You know, for the first one, should we do the 0.692?
Would you, if I missed that, a mayor? If you want me to propose the budget at the half-a penny up rate with options to go down, you would directly prepare the budget at the half-a penny. You would then have a motion, if I'm understanding the debate correctly, you would then have a motion directing us to advertise a rate between the current rate and the half-a penny. So, yeah. Correct. Yeah, and so it's a question of whether you want to start and look at scenarios down, or whether you want to start and look at scenarios up. And that is completely your, your question.
I think we said the current rate and then the half a penny up. Commissioner, tell me, did you still have your question?
I was just saying, that's, that's actually what I said, currently.
Okay. Could I get a motion?
I'm Commissioner Gomez, and the city commission direct the city manager to prepare the 25 proposed budget at the 0.692 per $100 of assessed value in this new scenario.
Could I get a second?
Our Commissioner told me further that the city commission direct the city manager to advertise a real property. Turn that motion, okay, and second.
Okay, all are bigger. Okay, so the second option.
Our Commissioner told me move the city commission, direct the city manager to advertise a real property taxed between 0.687 and 0.692 per $100 assessed value incorporated option into the FY2025 proposed budget for each scenario of the commission's consideration.
Could I get a second? Commissioner, same question. Okay. Thank you for that. If you need to stay up a day or break, you'll go to the senior center for a warranty.
Right. I'll give you another very brief update. So this one third of the survey is live. We are currently proposing estimate is to move it up to the celebration recreation, or continue to, to the smartest, say, event. We will likely close within the after, so that we pour it through so that the information can be compiled in the commission for the work session. The summary information included below is the same. And we can take each item at the commission's pleasure. I will give you a brief construction status update. So as you know, we have been working through some difficulties with the maturity, the general contractor that was brought on to do the job subsequently terminated. And a couple of other cycles, like the architect and engineer. We are mostly through working those issues, and I believe that was the last outstanding one, which related to the potential contamination of a stormwater infringement facility on site. I believe we have a verbal agreement on how to appropriately mitigate that. That is the last barrier to us going in for longer. So I'm hoping to give the commission data in the coming days that we spend finalizing and that we're going for you. Not to jinx it, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Senior Center for it. Perfect. And for the commission's information, we are planning a bigger construction status update. So we'll bring this to light back. We'll get a deeper dive into what we've been up to. But as I said, we have been working with the surety of the money.
Very meaningful, very meaningful.
Yes.
Sorry, my senior. You have permission. Okay. Thank you. Continue, you want to?
All right, thank you. So the programming commentary remains unchanged for the item that you saw previously. Although I feel it is important to highlight a couple of process-related issues. So the way that the budget for the senior center is currently built is that funding set aside for operations, that's going to offset the cost. That purchases, these set of programming, and will be used to fund the startup costs for some, but not this program. So what, what we've got in the book is money set aside for a purpose. What we don't have is individual programs and associated appropriations. And so what I'm asking the, the commission for is essentially, you already got this pot of money out there. I just need clearer direction and authority from you on how and you have to spend it. So the motions are by program to go establish the program and create appropriation for that program. That's not the end-all, be-all of the future of these programs. The model that we're using involves bringing in service and leading partners to deliver a lot of this program. They're going to be subject to contracts and interviews, most of which will make their way back to the commission for approval. They predominantly fall outside of staff's award authority. And so they will be cycling their way back to you with final parameters in terms of an inquiry or contract, as well as final budget. But I do need the program approval and the initial appropriation to get that process. All of them, I think it's about the opening.
The open access.
Yes.
Access ability to community space, business equipment, boxes and game room, Monday, Thursday, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. David's good on having projected star.
Correct. This sets the basic operating parameters for the building because which of these are going to be open for walking access in which... We're starting small intentionally. We do not have a good basis for user data. We don't have live user data. Just the... And so my, my anticipation is that we will start with relatively limited open access program.
So we need a motion to dispatch the open access program to the department. I need a motion.
My turn. I, Commissioner Jann, would move that the city...
I, Commissioner Jan, would move that the City Commission establish the open access program in the Department of Senior Services. I further move that the City Commission appropriate flat of that. A senior center designated ARPA funds for one-time startup-related operational expenditures. I further move that the City Manager prepare a budget adjustment to allocate $5,000 of non-departmental expenditures to the Department of Senior Services operating project.
Could I get a second?
Can I go next in this motion? On the favor. Motion carries.
Carry. So now we have the health and wellness.
This is projected to be contractual service through a couple of different community partners that are largely publicly based. There are one or two that may be subjected to competitive procurement. But once the programming is established, we will develop RFPs or RFQs for those programs. So stuff that is, that we can contract or work with the county on or Prince George's County Community College are very easy agreements for us to enter into. If we're entering into an agreement with another type of service provider, we do need to adhere to the competitive procurement practices.
So could I get a motion?
The commission established the health and wellness program in the Department of Senior Services. I further move the City Commission appropriate 25,000 senior center designated ARPA funds for wellness programming startup initiatives and forward future recurring program expenditures to the FY25 budget development process. Could I get a second?
Commission, tell me a second.
All are favored. Motion carries. So, yeah, do you agree?
The public safety.
The public safety program is built on a model that is not understanding that the police department used to use with respect to wellness checks on vulnerable individuals. This is essentially proposing that we kick off that program and implement a system for vulnerable populations where they can actively liaise with the senior services and the police department on more coordinated, or on the equivalent of more coordinated wellness checks.
Do you want to add anything to that? Did you want to add anything to that?
Features of this program include some forward-facing things that we find really interesting. For example, Ms. Washington noted the work that she's doing compiling information for the population. This is a direct tie into that, too. We're hoping to put resources that would be disposed to access things like volunteer volunteer meal deliveries, things like that. And so while the lead on this is senior services and the police department, we really are envisioning that as a whole. Support issue.
My permission, I, Commissioner Jan, for this. I think, Commissioner Jan, that the City Commission establish the senior public safety program in the Department of Senior Services. Further move that the City Commission appropriate $5,000 of senior center designated ARPA financial wellness programming startup expenditures and forward future recurring program expenditures to the FY2025 budget development process.
Could I get a second?
Commission, tell me a second.
All are favored. Number four, housing.
This is a program where we would like to go back and do some. There are initiatives on the state docket, the county docket, that directly pertains to the provision of affordable housing. Everybody, right? And so loosening up zoning requirements on accessory dwellings so that people can reach base age in intergenerational family homes is something that's of interest to this program. We also, we'd like to go back and we report to the commission on resources that are already available to residents. And we tailor this segment to essentially an information referral program whereby District Heights acts as a connector for individual residents and having energy assistance program or other programs that might be available. And help them apply for those programs, offer for those programs as opposed to setting up a funding stream. We think, just looking at this over the last week, we think that would be better than. Great thoughts? And so I respectfully request you to report back to the commission on that.
Thank you for that. Number five, education.
All right.
Oh, do we want to table this? The motion to table this?
We can take a motion or I can accept it as direction for the day. It's like simple.
Yeah.
This is what we want to do because what David was saying is if we go through WSSC or some type of organization or whatever, we will look at those programs. Because we may, because it may be some type of administrative costs, but we don't know what that may be, and may not see anything. So we're just going to look into the programs and then come back and then we figure out. Because when you look at the amount and look at our staff and new shared costs, really wouldn't come to get there. So we want to see what programs are out there first.
We can say about the work of.
Yes. Yes. So we did have WSSC, they came in for Thanksgiving lunch and they're talking about some free programs. So we want to look at those type of programs first.
And also, David, we could possibly, in two time at least here, we could maybe even start looking at some ordinance that's for those accelerated dwellings. I've seen some creative uses and some of them are already in play in Virginia.
Yes.
In Montgomery County.
Yes.
We don't have to amend that.
Correct. Where he could certainly look at that and just keep it to the mission.
So, um, so we wanted to a motion, we need a motion to table this until David, the City Manager, or other programs for residents at a later date.
I, Commissioner Gomez, move the City Commission table the establishment of the housing senior center, but ARPA fund budget to a later board session.
Could I get a second?
Commission, tell me a second.
All are favored. Thank you for that. So now we go to number five, education.
Number five, educational is largely predicated on bringing Prince George's County Community College in-house to the senior center to offer a program. There are Spanish classes and a number of other classes that we consider bringing in. The question before the commission, so the way that I understand the stage program to operate is basically, Prince George's County Community College is requesting space, we provide the space, and then the community college charges the fee for class. Very well. The question that I'm focusing to the commission is essentially, does the commission to offset some or all of the costs that it'd be for residents to enroll in classes? That's something that we could do and offer as an amenity to residents. But it's completely within the conditions for you to.
Now, would we go first here?
We would, we would certainly bring in that if it's, if it's successful, we'll let you know. If it's not successful, we continue to let you know. But that's something we will. If there's not funding for it, we will let you know.
We'll be creative. So if that's something, I think it would be. Even if we didn't do the full registration, but maybe a percentage, you know, depending on.
And that's something that I can bring back in the final interview to the commission to consider. Because the commission's pleasure to look at a percentage of those people offset, I can work with Prince George's County Community College to come up with something.
But we will still at least appropriate the $3,000.
Yes, because I need to be able to commit to the community college a certain.
So, could I get a motion?
Hey, William, do they offer ASL classes as well? I don't know, I haven't seen them asking for that as well, so.
We can certainly look into it. Off the top of my head, although I do know they offer language classes. So even the price of ASL.
Could I get a motion?
They do.
Okay. Yeah, you can include that as well.
I can certainly ask if we're technical.
I, Commissioner, tell me move that the City Commission establish a senior education program in the Department of Senior Services. I further move that the City Commission appropriate $10,000 for senior center designated ARPA funds for wellness programs and startup expenditures and forward future recurring programs to the F25 budget development process.
Could I get a second? All are favored. Economic and workforce to go.
Thank you. This one is a little further off into the future, but we are looking at options for reskilling and upscaling our senior population. So there are more and more financial demands on those who are retired or partially retired, as well as those who are attempting to age in their homes. And so one thing the city can bring to bear through the senior center is resources for job skills, applications, and supporting folks into, you know, making sure that they're financially secure as they age. There's also an element in financial support and incubating. Spirit, which is something that I will seek to incorporate into this.
I, Commissioner Gomez, move the City Commission forward establishment of the senior development and workforce development program to the FY25 budget development process.
Could I get a second?
Commission, tell me a second.
All are favored. Motion carries.
A suggestion. So what I would like to suggest is that maybe both our new workforce development lab here, we kind of, to add extension to the senior, since that was no cost to us.
Yes, we can certainly look at either relocating or expanding the number of terminals and assets that we have. The senior center is equipped with a computer room. We have computers that are dedicated for this purpose. We can certainly place one in the building, make sure that it is targeted toward that. We would have to work with the Prince George's Georgetown, but that's something that I'm sure we can.
Thank you. Number seven, mini lunch program.
All right, the commission received a briefing on the next round to participate in the Prince George's County Aging and Disability Program starts in July. There is a nominal cost for that program. The city will bear, it's about $20,000. What we're looking at and having is options to get us from the anticipated opening of the building to July. And so the commission can expect some more information about options as well. This is another one of the programs where it's the option for us because it is a kind of program, they are asking for space, which we have. And there's a nominal, I believe a nominal fee or permanent cost. It's like $4 or $5.
So we're going to start with $26,000.
Yes.
Okay. Could I get a motion?
I, Commissioner Gomez, move that the City Commission establish the senior community lunch program in the Department of Senior Services. I further move that the City Commission appropriate $26,000 of senior center designated ARPA funds for wellness programming startup expenditures and forward future recurring program expenditures to the FY25 budget development process.
Could I get a second? Commissioner Jan, for second motion.
All right.
Number eight, transportation.
There are two, two future program considerations that I would like the commission to consider as a part of the upcoming budget process. The most prominent of that is the transportation news program. We understand that there was a completion service that was offered in the past popular. The city has looked at options of a regular shuttle service for people, vulnerable populations to access food and other necessities in local leisure systems. There's also an interest, at least from a staff perspective, in leveraging the same transportation vehicles to standard enhance recreation programs and potentially support economic development initiative by looking to the feasibility needs of a shuttle for residents that the city provided to larger people in metro stations. Right, the idea being that we could run a regular shuttle here. Residents could then, perhaps if they had a power or an expectation, could have easier and safer access to metro, to access jobs, and be financially secure. So we are looking to kick that one, study-wise, concurrently with the budget process. There's, there's two pieces to it. Purchasing an appropriate vehicle, these are two pieces. Modeling needs and demand is a little bit more time-intensive, but it comes down to if the city is going to outlay the this type of vehicle sources to operate, that we want to make sure there's. And some grant on some of those.
Yeah. Electric shovel and charging station. Yeah.
So we don't. So we don't have that. I do know that one of the problems we have with the other vehicle was when we did a cost per rider, we were averaging about six riders a month, which averaged about, with the cost of the driver and the bus, it's like $10,000 diverse. My understanding. That's why I'm suggesting combining it with a couple of other services and programs so that per person cost, if there's one consistent. And so what we need to report, we need to look at and report back to the commission is basically, do we think this is. do we think this is feasible? What would your sample rate be? Because one of the problems that we have with the city is we don't get enough people to participate. And I don't, you know, personally, I don't want to commit to something like this to maintain that we have this, when we could use this money. This is a big commitment. Even if we could get grant funding for it and, you know, we're not using it. And so I just, there is still carrying costs. If the Commission's pleasure, staff can, can prepare an advance report of this, we will pull together as much information and data as we can without having to go through the time. And see if we can give the Commission at least the top-level information with respect to feasibility. And we can bring that probably in March is when we could report back on something like that. To give you a better sense before you take it out of determination. There's, and to remind, to remind the Commission and the community, there's no rush on a lot of this program. You dispense with the more critical matters and you can deliberate on things like this to the extent that you can.
Also, we have to just think about if we make this investment, what are the additional programs or transportations that we could do or add once you have. We're on marketing planning, we've been staying a lot of frequent stuff. So we just have to start thinking. Maybe be transported to an after school, you know, just kind of without each one of those driving.
And we can certainly. And we, and we can certainly. Bottom four, three point, we certainly develop and present use cases for the Commission to consider. You make a very valid point. One of the ongoing conversations we have with recreation, she's stuck around, someone put in a fight. Is we have invested interest in making sure that children who are on elementary schools can safely access programming that occurs after school in recreation. Having something like this will help with that, but it still needs to.
My thing that I also like to see, and I know I do say it, I did talk to our school board, that is why our kids don't take school trips. I don't see them at the library, it's just something and I don't see them there and it troubles me. So maybe that's one, a reason, but I'd like to see them, you know, there taking a tour. Yeah, so if that's, if that's a problem, maybe, yeah, but I'd just like to make sure that we would, we could get a new side of this before. Serving, you know.
Yes.
But we, we really have to, you know, get a good sample rate. If we could get five or 10%, you know, that would be, yeah.
Just one comment, I think, I think we, this, having a transportation loop and something that's also focused on commuters is a really good way for us to also be including not just our senior population, our kids, but sort of that middle population. We've sort of discussed often about what do we have that would appeal to somebody who's working, someone with a career, right, people who are taking the train. So I do think that that would be a really good perk and a benefit that we can assess with, especially when we see a lot of our newer, younger neighbors, maybe just the neighborhood. I think this would be a really big benefit. And we do have higher levels of commuters in our district heights compared to the county. We have close to 20% just for, so there's definitely the data points to maybe a demand.
Yeah, what are, what are our deep scenes like in high court? You know, I see a lot of seniors running bikes, so we can add transportation, the bikes as well.
We can certainly look into the multi, multi-mode.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one question.
Sure. Mr. Triggs, is this vehicle, do you know how many vehicles, I mean, how many of this vehicle seats?
Off the top of my head, no. We would need to, if we were to purchase anything, we would size it based on. And so there's an example.
Okay, any other questions? You have some additional?
Yeah, so we don't remember, I have to look back. I think I have sufficient direction to work on approvals for the programming. Those will also make their way back to the Commission if they have. For what we've got, captured a number of questions that we're going to respond to as early as the February 27th, board session, but likely continue to have board sessions. Most of them will line up with the budget process, which is an appropriate place we need to deliver, to delivering service delivery. But we will try to give you as much propotted information and data as possible. So who's standing to the Commission?
I would say. Very deep question. Need an announcement?
Yes, so I got to the initiative, so the three day, I went to lunch, you know, with my students and a lot more. And talked about, you know, how they're going to school and interacting, so, you know. I'm going to say thanks to Ms. Turner for setting up the District Heights Cavers Initiative. So all of us, all the commissioners that are maybe will be visiting District Heights on a monthly basis to interact with the students and I think this is a good program. So, yeah, so, you know, I actually, well, I have kids, I've talked to them, so that's, that's a good part of it to just kind of see somebody in the community working and interacting with them.
Shouldn't tell me, what, what did they have you doing when you were visiting?
So, yes, so most of them had me put in the stalls and made them to open nut stuff. Out of professional open nut stuff.
Black History. Talent Show.
So like you said, I had a great time at Recreation District Heights. Black History Talent Show, we have some great talent in the city, the people show up, they show up. We also stopped by Heavenly Way, Heavenly Way Church, and gave a love brunch, which was wonderful. Not if you've ever been to the brunch, but they made some meat and grits. And then we got to stop by Katrina Anderson's Family Night, Family Engagement Night, which was really nice. I really enjoyed myself, and it wasn't just because the food was good, but I learned a lot. And I'm really amazed and impressed by the program that the city's putting on. And I really wish more residents would get out and take advantage of this program because it's, it's super professional, the information is transformational and you can really apply it to your life. And I learn something every, every time I go, so I think I know a lot, you know, I, I can always learn something. So take advantage of this program, it's very special and they were really honored to give you great service and great program.
So for the Family Engagement Night, they focused on vision board. And it was a lot of great information. And I thought that it would be great to bring it here to the city in recreation, to just open it up to staff and the public. Because the way they presented it, it's things that we think about, but we don't focus, you know, finances, family, I mean, just so many things that goes into that vision board that helps you to be a successful person. And so I thought it would be great if we all did here maybe one day, maybe read. So, yeah, we had a busy weekend. But speaking of school aged kids and not going on field trips, not feeling played, those kids were amazing, I'm talking toddlers, knowing routines. I mean, it was just so joyful to watch them and the energy that they had. And so we definitely need to continue that. And I want to give a shout out to Claudia Pearson, that she managed those little ones, like, oh, she keeps them in line and very engaged. And I think she has that way, that all she has to do is look at them, they know what to do. I want to say thank you to Claudia Pearson for her work, but we have some amazing programs here in the District Heights. And we need to really make sure that the residents know that we're always offering something and that they need to be engaged, so. Any other comments, because I just wanted to make an announcement about a program that we're working, partnering with. Of course, it's Dr. Seuss birthday coming up, so we have the Read Across America, Empowering Minds with Reading. And this is on March the 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So we're actually looking for authors of children's books. And they were also being programmed tackling the solution to reduce gun violence. So literacy is, is so important in reading. So we really want to come together with our partners and I will be rolling out this information to everybody. The issue will be posting it, so we're working on this draft, but please come out as March the 2nd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And any other comments or questions before I call for a motion to adjourn? Motion.
Vice Mayor Harcourt move to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Me, yes, and adjourned, thank you.